A little early, aren't we? That's okay. Okay, we can pause the recording right now. We are live on YouTube and we're also being recorded right now on this here. So we'll see if Dave gets back on.
Okay, so are we waiting or can we at least get this public hearing out of like underway?
Yeah, well, I think you can get going and we'll.
Is there anybody in the room here even?
Dave, can you hear us?
I can hear you, Bill, but I can't. You guys can't see me.
Okay, you should, there should be over towards the bottom left. It should have video step or your video. Turn that on. Okay, Paul, we're, I think we're ready to go. He can hear us.
Yep, it's good enough. Okay, so the legal notice of public hearing. The common counsel of the city of Olean, New York, has scheduled a public hearing for Tuesday, December 22nd, 2020 at 6:15 PM via Zoom. The purpose of this hearing is to receive public input, propose local law 01-2020 to amend the City of Olean Charter, Article 3, Division 4, to include Section 3.090 containing qualifications for the city auditor. A link to attend this hearing will be posted in the City of Olean website located at www.cityvolian.org prior to the hearing. For more information or for a copy of the proposed legislation, please contact the Common Council Office, 716-376-5635, or visit www.cityvolian.org. Signed, Len Marshall, City Clerk. So, Bill, do you have anybody that wants to talk to this or Nick or? Any public comment you want to do or?
If anybody wants to talk, I have one person who's an attendee. Not sure if they want to talk. They can raise their hand if they'd like to talk. Dave, you're with us now, right?
Yeah, I think I did it.
Like I found a thing where I could let you in as the panelist, switch over to panelist. So, okay, so if we have anybody out there that wants to give comment, they can. Okay, I have one hand raised, so I am given access for comment here. Please identify yourself.
You're on mute.
You're gonna have to.
Whoever is on here as Alessandro, they need to unmute their microphone, please.
Going once. Walk them through it.
So there's a button on your screen that says unmute. You need to press that.
Okay, I muted them.
Why don't you just pick them?
Would you please state your name for the record?
I think that's a.
Name and address for the record.
I've asked them to mute themselves. They're not doing it, so.
All right.
Hang on, there's a chat. Let me see what it says here.
Asking who they were.
And they're gone.
Okay.
We all just got ransomwareed, by the way.
Yeah.
There's nobody else, Paul, in there.
Okay, well, that being said, I will call the public hearing closed unless any of anyone here, anyone on the council has any comments or whatever, anything at all.
I have a comment if I may.
Definitely, Mayor.
Okay. The. I don't believe that the city auditor should be a certified public accountant. I believe we, you know, we have to hire outside auditing firms anyways to do our audit. So I would much rather leave the position as an accountant and devote the money, the additional money that would cost us to bring in a certified public accountant to hire a human resource person. I think we're, we're, we need a human resource person in here more than we need a certified public accountant. So I'd like you to consider that. I think maybe this needs more discussion. I would encourage you to table this until we can have more discussion on this. So we can take a look at, like I said, getting a, I'm not either part-time or, or full-time human resource specialist in here. So we can, you know, get the help that we need there. I don't think that we can support and increase CPA and also a human resource person. So that's, I'd just like to consider, I'd like you all to consider that.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Anyone else?
I guess I'll, I'll pitch in as long as everybody else is quiet. I've been on the fence about this. Originally, I was kind of siding with John. But I do think we're probably going to have a tough budget coming up here soon. And that it's something we can look at when the money's vibrant. But I feel like it's an option we probably should table for now.
Paul, this is Linda. I still have some questions. I think in a perfect world, a CPA would be great, but there was a reason the council changed the charter. I know I was texting with John earlier and he has more information to share with us. So before we do anything, I hope he shares it. But I would hate for us to have to cut something, whether it be another position or some program that we've, we started, you know, wherever the money is going to come from. And in the past, there was a reason the city changed the charter. So that's my concern. I just think this coming year with communities and states not getting funded by the federal government is not going to help. And I just think maybe tabling it and also including our new attorney. I know Nick's there and, but Nick's leaving. And I would just like to hear from our new city attorney, his take. So those are just a couple of my concerns.
So if I may, Paul?
Yeah.
So, I mean, this is, it's interesting that, you know, we've, we've had this going on now for how long and now these concerns come forward. So first of all, I do want to share, I've heard back from Nikon on the process. What Nick has advised us on is correct. And so, you know, despite, you know, granted, you know, I'm not a Harvard trained attorney, but Wade Beltramo from the General Counsel for Nikon got back to me under Section 7.1 of the Handbook for City Officials. It walks us through and what this process first of all does is it is a change, a minor amendment, does not change the structure of anything in the charter that would require a referendum. It requires, it's a local law which we as the city council have the authority to make decisions like this and make modifications. We are talking like this is impacting the budget this year. And to my knowledge, there is no change or impact to the budget this year. It is something that, as we always talk about being proactive and strategic, is something that allows us to plan for. Though as, as some are commenting about what a tough budget year we have coming up in 2021, this doesn't affect the budget in 2021. This affects, well, and, and, yeah. And I'm not going to put Fred on the spot and say, when are you retiring, right? But the point is, to my knowledge, it hasn't been informed that Bill has received a letter of resignation stating that Fred is retiring at the end of this year. So that means that we have the, the position to put this in place. One thing that I'm constantly hearing back from taxpayers is accountability, oversight and transparency, all of which a CPA brings to the table. Before this, two weeks ago, I met again with the Audit and Compliance Committee, the external members of that committee. Both are who are, you know, accountants, CPA, and, and we had another discussion on that. And they both agreed with the process of, as we are a $25 million organization with 150 people, you will, and we're talking about, I ran some numbers past them. We're talking about probably what I would expect to be maybe a $15,000 to $20,000 increase in pay for someone that brings an expertise that elevates the position and provides more of a comptroller level, level of oversight on our city government, on our spend and on our costs. So I want to voice that first of all, right? And as far as the legality goes, Nick can chime in and confirm, but I certainly feel a lot better knowing that Wade got back. And in fact, I mean, if you want me to read the verbiage, I have it pulled up here. But, but exactly what we are doing, under the legislative body decides, under local law, any sort of minor change. Now, what does require a referendum are structural changes. If we were to try to make the mayor a part-time position, add or subtract aldermen, decrease the pay of the mayor to eliminate any officers, but what we're doing. So the emails, the, the two emails we've received are uninformed, first of all. Nick, do you have any comment on that?
Oh, I stand by my original opinion on it.
I'd like to specify that the mayor is still a part-time position. It doesn't specify they, whoever went to full time.
Well, I misstated Kevin. If we wanted to try to go to like a strong council, if we wanted to make it a weak mayor, strong, if we wanted to do any structural changes, right? Then it would go to a referendum. So what we're talking about is, and overwhelmingly, the feedback I've received from constituents is, yeah, that's how I want my money spent, right? I want to make sure that, you know, everything is being accounted for and raise the, that position's capabilities, like I said, into more of a comptroller role. So that's what this is doing.
I think you make a good point, John. I mean, we're hiring, we would be hiring a CPA, right? We're not hiring a cardiologist. This is like a $15,000 to $20,000, you know, increase. And, you know, I think it's a good use of, use of our money and, you know, I don't know. I just, I don't, I don't get the resistance to it just because it's, it's, we haven't been doing it this way. That doesn't, and it doesn't mean we can't find a better way to do things.
I have a question, if I can. I was in favor of this in the beginning because I thought we would be able to get rid of our private auditing firm that comes in and does the books. And I think that's probably about $12,000, $15,000 expenditure, if I'm not mistaken. So I can't, now I can't see going to a CPA and paying the extra funding if we still have to by law have an independent auditor come in. To me, it's like paying for the same service twice.
So I spoke with the county, the deputy county treasurer, who's soon to be the county treasurer. He as well, in his spare time and his private career is, is a CPA. And he's looking at dropping a lot of the items off his certified public accountant. There's different checkboxes you pay for with continuing education and things like that. And he pointed out to me that he's not, he's not certain why the city would need one. Most of why you become a CPA is so that you can review and audit other people. And in his position, you would not be doing that with the city. And there's not really much extra CPA would do other than jumping through the hoops. And I know John's pointed out in the past, for accountability sake, if something were to happen to the city auditor and they, you know, did something, you'd, you'd want to have that extra, like if Nick did something, he would, he would have to also answer to the, the bar exam or to the, the board, whatever, whoever reviews people that passed the bar. So, and, and I get that, but at the same time, the extra expenditure, is it 15,000 to 20,000? I don't think we've ever talked about official numbers. I mean, like with DPW director conversations in the past before Bob Ring joined us. I mean, we were talking, you know, it could be anywhere from this amount and 50 grand plus that amount. And we weren't really sure what we were going to get. And if we wanted, you pay the higher, you know, and luckily we found such a great guy like Bob that has, you know, has the experience and the love for the city who grew up here. You know what I mean? But not all the time are you going to find that. You're going to hire somebody in. And my other point would be that I think unless we're willing to start reviewing other, I was on the fence like Jason, until we're willing to review other departments of our city, I think that this is more something that the funding should be, like I get that we're not paying the funding today, but the funding when it comes available should be allocated towards other areas, like we're having a problem recruiting new police officers. I think we need to review those types of things, you know, different expenditures where we've got buildings and, and things like that that need a lot of maintenance. And, you know, we mean, we, we're going to just sacrifice demoing one house a year for accountability of a position that may come under fire one decade.
See, but by that, sorry, Linda, you've been trying to get in. Go ahead.
No, I just wanted to ask Nick, if we were to say Fred retires and someone comes to apply for his position, that's a CPA. We don't need legislation to hire that person. We could hire them. Is that true? Is Nick still there?
There we go. I had unmute.
Sorry.
That is correct. You're not obligated to turn him away or turn her away because they have a CPA. You could certainly make that in your negotiations and your offer to them based on their experience. So you're, you're not stuck having to hire a non CPA if it were, were as your, your example is, yes.
Yes. Okay, thanks.
I don't know. I just, one thing I was just thinking of using that analogy that, you know, if we're going to hire a CPA, then we shouldn't have to hire an independent, like auditing firm. I mean, we have a city attorney and yet when we go to union negotiations, we have a, we have a separate lawyer for that. And I don't see how that's any different. And, you know, I don't know why there would be a fear of, you know, holding our employees to a higher standard, wanting better people, right? Everybody wants to complain about how, you know, they're so mad about how the city runs and God, they do this. Then we try to hire better people and everybody loses their minds. Like, oh, why would you pay them an extra $10,000? We're trying to get better people. That's why.
But I don't think extra pay just equates to more ethical people.
No, I'm not questioning ethics and Fred, Fred or anyone's ethics have never come in question. I'm saying you want someone with an education level that's, that's higher. Not, nothing, you know, you know.
If you can afford it.
If we can afford it, yep. We can carve that 10 grand out. That'd be nice.
Yeah. Well, you know, I mean, we have things going on in the city all the time that we don't seem to have control over. We have a $40,000 project behind a firehouse that we didn't know about. That's 40,000 right there. We didn't know. So things happen.
That's very relevant to this conversation too. Very good.
Well, it is because it's money and it's our job as the common council to look at where the money's spent. And maybe we need to do, be, be doing a better job.
I think.
Then, then wouldn't it be, if, is it, is it not fair to say that someone with a certain expertise, okay, would bring that expertise to benefit the city, right? I mean, the way that I see it is the, the net benefit, right, to have a certain level of experience and education and qualification. There was a reason why the city at one time had a CPA in their charter. And then they decided to do away with that because, well, let's just admit, councils of the past have made bad decisions too. At one time, they decided not to raise water rates for like a decade. So.
Two decades.
That, that decision didn't pan out so well for us. And isn't it our job to spend money and be fiscally responsible, but to expect a return on that investment? And, and my, and I wish I would have known that you had these concerns, Linda, and you would have communicated that earlier. I would have been happy to, to invite Ron and, and Ernie to this, to answer some of those questions. So it doesn't just seem like it's, you know, it's me speaking about this. I'm not, and I'm not an accountant, right? And, and neither are really any of us. So I have to, I have to rely on, same Bonaventure University, right? Maintains mandates a CPA for their comptroller's position. Why? Because the same reason we, we have a certified, you know, New York State bar, I'm sorry, attorney, as our city attorney, why we have a PE for our, our chief engineer. So what I'm saying is the net benefit to us, like to have someone who has that level of expertise to look for cost cutting and forecasting capabilities. If you're worried about $10,000, I mean, you know, you don't have any problems catering to your, your people on Main Street to spend some money there, you know, to, to make that a beautiful project. But for the, for all of the, all of the city of Olean, right? To benefit all of the city and our finances? You're, you're questioning $10,000?
I don't think you can honestly sit there and say, John, it's only going to be $10,000. And I think what Nick just pointed out, which I don't have a problem with is, we could hire a CPA tomorrow if Fred retired. We don't have to change the charter to hire one. So it's like when we change it, we're putting ourselves in a corner to.
Exactly.
If you look at the history, that's why they changed it because we, we couldn't find one and we couldn't afford one. And, you know, that's just a fact. That's not something that didn't happen. It did happen. So I guess I look at the history of the city and yes, do I think going forward and making changes is a wonderful thing? I think it is. But I also think you have to look at our history. And do I think we've made mistakes? Absolutely. And I think we're going to have, probably make more mistakes. But I just think you don't, you don't take and change something that you can do without changing it. I guess that's my point. You, you don't need this to hire a CPA. Nick just said that.
May I chime in for a second?
Sure, Fred.
I, this doesn't affect me personally because what happens after I leave will happen one way or the other. But I did some due diligence and I checked with the communities around us of equal size. I checked with the city of Jamestown, the city of Salamanca, Goonda, Hornell, Wellsville, Canandaigua, Springville and Dunkirk. They're all Olean-ish sized communities. Not one of those communities have the, a requirement that calls for a CPA to hold this position. I personally don't think it needs a CPA. I think a CPA, quite frankly, would come to work here and be bored to tears because this job is not challenging enough for a CPA to be, to be employed here full time. I just thought I'd mention to you that we would be the only community in Chautauqua, Cataragus and Allegheny County that would require a CPA to come to work for us.
And, and maybe we'll be the first ones and, and, and other people will follow our lead.
Maybe instead of a CPA, maybe what the city needs is a city manager type position. Again, that's like, I was for this at first before I thought we had to have an independent auditor come in, not to repeat myself. But with, with COVID and the state restrictions and the state aid, it's not going to be coming. I think maybe we should postpone this to next year and not kill it, but just think about it and think of how our budget in the future is going to proceed with, with all the state aid cuts that we're going to be facing. The state of New York right now is $15 billion in deficit. So we're going to be, we're going to be feeling a lot of that pain too. So maybe, maybe we should just hold off and until next year and, and consider it. And if Fred retires, hopefully he don't, but if he retires, we could put CPA, if they're interested in coming to work for the city of Olean, salary negotiable. And if we have to pay another $5,000, $10,000, if we think it's warranted at that time, we can consider it that. But I think we're putting a cart before the horse.
I'm sorry. Vernon, did you have something to say?
I mean, I had a lot to say in the past half hour, but I mean, I'm to a point now where I'm, I'm just kind of confused. But, you know, when, let's see, to start, when you look up CPA right off the bat, some of the definitions of it talks about how the person helps in, in advising with organizing a plan and reaching financial goals, which is something that the city could use. And then as far as what Doherty said is reviewing some of the positions, maybe this could be the beginning. I think we do need to review some of the positions here in the city of Olean. I mean, for one, Fred, you know, nothing against Fred or anything, but he just said a CPA would be bored out of their minds. If that's the case, maybe we ought to review that position altogether. Maybe a clerk can do that. So, and then, you know, there is no timeline on when Fred is leaving. And, you know, he could be leaving, what, next five years? So that means that this will be in place and nothing would happen in the next five years. So there goes the budget theory. And then lastly, with all of the nepotism that happens around this city, who knows what happened in the past with the city council and what in the what position? We don't know what happened. That may very well be why the CPA was dropped. Someone wanted to put in their cousin, brother, uncle, you know, who knows? But I think only needs some serious changes. I think we're the council that can do that. And that's why I'm here. This is all new to me, but I definitely, I backed this, I supported this and I still do today. Thanks.
I think you make a great point. Somebody said earlier, I don't remember who, but we didn't, we didn't want to do this because it would box ourselves in. Yeah, that's what we want to do. We want something like this to be boxed. And we want to be constrained to hire the best person. And, you know, it might not be this mayor or the next mayor or two mayors from now. But like you said, you could want to hire his buddy or, or, you know what I mean? You never know what could, could happen unless we put controls in, right? So that's why I support this for right now.
I'm trying to, to understand a bit of a history lesson, but it was my understanding and maybe someone can refresh my, my memory. But at one time, the city had a, had a CPA and the CPA, for whatever reason, lost their license with the state of New York. Is that, is that, is that correct? And then they lost their position. Bill, could you try, do you, do you have any recollection of that?
No, I do not. I know that, no, from way back Ted Moody wasn't a CPA all the way up. I believe that the last person that was a CPA in here was Janet Jones. And, and that wasn't, I mean, that was, he was just hired, like, like you're saying. She was hired as, as the, as the accountant. And she came in as a CPA, but I, I'm not familiar with the, with the one that may have lost her CPA license and I'm not familiar with that.
Linda, do you have any recollection?
No, no, I worked with Janet and then Fred.
Okay. Who was before Fred?
Janet.
We have, who was before Janet?
Steve.
Ashla.
Ashla. Yeah.
Yeah.
And Greg, Greg Procton was here. I'm not sure. I believe Greg may have been a CPA, but he did not hang around too long.
There was a Bob Ballway or something that was in there too. I'm not.
He was here for about, he was between Janet and myself. The city hired him and it didn't work out. They terminated him maybe three or four months into his employment.
I think if we just change the hiring practices, I, you know what I mean? Or at least be cognizant of these things. I mean, boxing ourselves in a corner, I just don't, and it's, I don't even feel like, I, I understand John's point about, you know, hey, 10, 10, 15, $20,000. I mean, that's, that's, that's paint and shrubbery around a pump station. I get that. I get that point, John. I just, I, I think if you. I I get that. I get that point, John. I just, I, I think if you you just, you you do a better hiring practice. You you won't have some of the concerns that you're, we have, you know, and I've been a big proponent of. I've been a big proponent of about the position as, since I've been here. But at the same time, like, because you would make a damn fine city auditor, John, you're very. You you're very with through the numbers. You might not have the municipal training to make it, you know what I mean, to to qualify. But at the same time, like, you're not a CPA. Nor should a finance professor maybe have a CPA license. But at the same time, like. You know, I guess it's all about who the mayor is that appoints that person.
Just for a correction, it's not a mayoral appointment. It it is, but it's still a civil service position. There is a test that has to be taken now according to civil service.
Which predates Fred, correct? Or post dates Fred?
No, it's always been a civil service position.
Okay, I I I thought there wasn't a test up to a couple of years ago or something. I thought that we had heard that in a prior meeting. Sorry.
Well, I I I guess the, you know, the last thing that I'll I'll leave this with is. I believe that we owe it to our constituents. Obviously, to take the the stance that like, we we must be financially conservative. At all times, which translates to not spending money. Which is ironic when we have like this, you know, ten million dollar project or however many millions of dollars down Union Street, right? Sometimes you have to invest in your community and sometimes you have to invest in your organization. And to reiterate what Vernon said, right? And what Paul said, like. We get slammed for being reactive all the time. And now we're trying to be proactive, to be able to plan for something that could be four years down the road. That we can start building into our budget. So the 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 debate over this year's coming budget is is really kind of just a. That's a, that's kind of a poor excuse. It's, you know. Unless I'm, unless I've, you know, there, there was a handful of people who got stirred up on social media. And if, you know, and if that's what is all of a sudden, which is really like literally like a night and day. Swing of of opinion. Then then you're not seeing the bigger picture of of strengthening the organization to better. Watch over our taxpayer money. And you can, you know what, I could, I wish I, I should have come prepared, right? I could go out and find some some municipalities as well that probably have and mandate a CPA. So I mean, I I appreciate that input, but I could, I I'm sure that that's easily, you know. Found out there as well. So at the end of the day, I I will continue to fight for. The best oversight. And if it's going to cost an extra ten or fifteen thousand dollars. To to get somebody in that position, then that's where I think our taxpayer money is best spent. So that's, that's, that's the end of my, my case. And I do believe, and I, and to Bill's, I absolutely believe we need an H R director. This, this place should be run like a bit, more like a business. It's not a business per se. I understand that. But I do believe we need someone that has H R expertise. And I'm sure when that time comes, maybe some of you will say, well, it says in the charter. That the city auditor's position takes the H R role. We can't spend the money on that. Well, guess what? In twenty twenty one, we do. We need someone that has that expertise. You know, the department heads currently, as my understanding. Are the ones that are responsible for for tracking and forecasting a lot of, all of their project costs and things like that. And and I'm not exactly, and I'm not going to speak. I I know Fred does, the position of the auditor helps and and does track that. But. You know, we need someone to be able to help hiring and and write up job descriptions and do job performance evaluations. I don't believe that's being done. So should that be done though? Absolutely. You know, any, any business organization I've worked for does that. Annual evaluations and reviews. Right? And I mean, it's unfair for for the auditor's position to be responsible for our sexual harassment training. Like, but that's because, but it says that in the charter. So must be a prior, you know. Council decided that was, that was the law. And so when it comes time for that discussion, is that going to be your logic? Like, well, it was done like that for a reason. So I know, I know I'm rambling now, but.
I think, John, we were being proactive by having these conversations and I think it's a great thing. And I just, I'm kind of with Dave on this one. And just if we continue the conversation rather than. Voting on it tonight, I I don't think you'll have mine or Dave's nor Jason's support on it. But it sounds like Lindt nor Linda's either. I just.
And I think, you know, the follow up of what Kevin's saying, I think more discussion is due. And I think that's what happens when the community gets involved. They make you look at things a different way. I look at it a different way because I sat in Bill's chair for four years. So I I do know the shortcomings. And it's not just this coming year's budget. I think the impact of this year's budget is going to be with us for a few years to come. So I would be in favor of tabling this and just having more discussions. And John, maybe all of us would would benefit from having the Ernie and Ron coming in. And we could just ask and and talk about it more. But I just think, you know, table it and bring it up next year.
Sure. When we have the exact same council and the exact same financial situation, we'll just have this conversation again in May. Okay. That's cool.
Yeah, but pause, some things are changing. Like, for instance, what Mayor Elio brought up earlier, an H R position. I think that's long overdue. And quite frankly, when we, if we are lucky enough to do that. But listen, if we were, are lucky enough to put that position in place, we could remove a lot of those things that. Shouldn't be where they are now. The sexual harassment, the public, the safety committee, the, just different things. Doing evaluations. That would go a long way to help the city. That doesn't mean that automatically a CPA gets taken off the table. It's just, as you said, progress. But I think, I think several people here tonight have good ideas. And have good arguments. And that's good. That's what democracy is all about. So that's just my thoughts. I'm only one person.
I just think that, okay, so we'll we'll punt on this for now and then we'll go hire an H R manager. And then when we go to bring this up again, we'll move the goalposts and we'll come up with another reason why we can't do it. Or another priority or another thing. And I don't know, we're, we're just gonna, we're gonna make decisions based on Facebook posts and that's fine.
It's not Facebook, Paul. It's it's overall what we are supposed to be doing here. And, and I'm sorry, just look at the things that have happened in the last few weeks, John. You know, just money being spent, we don't know about. And it has nothing to do with Fred. It's department heads. Doing things that the mayor didn't know about, we didn't know about. You know, I just think, you know, there's. There's room for discussion here. That's all I'm asking. And that's what we're here for, to discuss things.
And it's unfortunate that like three squeaky wheels on social media is enough to to sway all of a sudden. Which was a unanimous support for for oversight of our, in increased oversight and increased transparency. And forecasting capabilities and everything else. And it's, it's unfortunate that like a couple squeaky wheels, like all of a sudden, you know, shake the council up. You know, and that's, that's unfortunate. And you know, you talk about, you you're stuck on this forty thousand dollars thing that we didn't know about. How about a million dollar project overrun that we didn't know about? We're, we're, you know what? That's what I'm worried about the next time, Linda. It's, it's not, you know.
And whose, whose fault was that, John? That wasn't Fred's. That was our city attorney and our mayor.
I'm not saying it was or it wasn't. I'm just saying, having a, having a. Potentially, right? Obviously, I don't know for certain. But having a CPA in there. Would would certainly give me more confidence that that type of situation, that the project overruns don't occur. And and if they do occur, we're informed about it in a timely manner. I mean.
I think we need transparency across the board.
So, we're gonna get a CPA like a mask and get that false sense of security and then everybody's got that warm fuzzy feeling. We have a CPA and.
So in in that respect, something I've been thinking about here. You know, and I I don't think a certification gives you all the guarantees you're looking for. At the same time. It sounds like what the folks at Support it want is to. See that the council and or the mayor could strongly consider using a CPA if it seems beneficial. And it is cost effective or the money's there to spend. What's, what's wrong with including wording in the charter where it's, where what we change is. That a consideration for a CPA is strongly recommended. Just to ensure that the council never forgets to think about that when they need to hire one.
Right. Same way that Bill Elliott always hires city employee, city employees to be living in the city. That's, I always agree with Bill on that one. I think that our employees need to take part in our city. I mean, that should be a highly recommended idea. We can't mandate it, at least as far as I'm, as far as I know, but.
Yeah. And as I pointed out earlier, and so did Nick, you could hire a CPA tomorrow. You know, you don't have to rewrite the charter to hire one.
At the end of the day, we'll just keep doing the same things and hope things, hope things get better. So.
Jason, stop following social media.
There you go. So anybody have anything else they want to add to this spirited debate? Does anyone else join to our, our, our meeting and raise their hand, Bill?
No.
Okay.
No one else has raised their hand, no.
Okay, so do we want to call?
Here goes Dan Gaten.
Hang on, we do, we have, yeah. Go ahead, Daniel.
Like you guys need a little bit more oversight than what you have current. It sounds like to me that the common council is up here arguing about where finances are going and where's money going. And nobody knows where your money's going. Nobody knows about your budget overruns. Nobody knows about the projects that are being done as far as the common council itself goes. So it sounds like you, you, the process in the city is that the department heads can spend this money. Come back to you guys later and say that we spent this money or we over, or, you know, we overextended ourselves on the budget. Or we did this or we did that. And you guys just go ahead and write off on that. Because that's from a community member. That's what it sounds like to me is going on. And you guys definitely need some more oversight from a common council perspective. Because it definitely doesn't sound like you have it. From my perspective, as a community member taxpayer, it doesn't sound like you guys have any financial. Accountability to where this money's going and how it's being spent, where it's being spent. And believe it or not, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you guys to strongly look at what Dave said after this conversation. Is you guys may want to start looking at a city manager. If you guys are this far behind the eight ball and knowing where your money is spent. Then you guys need to look at a city manager because you guys are beyond a CPA. If you, if you're spending a million dollars on an override on a project and the common council don't know about it, that's a travesty to the community. And that, that's just one project. And I don't even blame the department heads because if they weren't. If the expectation is not for them to report to you, why would they report to you until it was over? If you don't set that expectation and you don't have the people in place to carry that expectation out. Then you can't blame the department head. You gotta blame yourself. So it sounds to me like you guys are, you guys need a city manager to come in and level you guys off. And at least let you guys, get you guys out of, out of, out of solid ground where you even know where your money is even going. You guys are passing laws, passing resolutions, doing all this stuff, passing projects. You don't even know where your money's going. No idea.
Hey, Dan.
Taxpayer, that, that, that's pretty rough. And you can say ten thousand dollars here, ten thousand dollars there. You really don't know what it's going to cost you to hire a CPA. Until you actually go out, try to recruit, run. But you guys got. I didn't realize how bad of problems you guys had until I just sat here and listened to you guys talk and go back and forth. And your guys' financial problems and accountability to the common council are way deeper than what I, I, I imagine them to be. It sounds like to me you guys just got money flying out of everywhere and have no accountability to it whatsoever. That, that, that's a shame.
Hey, Dan, can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So if people on this council and people in the community are this hesitant about spending fifteen thousand dollars extra for a CPA. Where do you think they're going to come down on dropping eighty grand a year forever on a city manager?
Well, the thing about it is, is where do you think the city's going to come? Where do you think the city residents are going to come down on a common council who don't know where their money's going?
I I agree. I was in favor of the city manager idea when we toyed with it, what was it, John, two years ago? And and people in the community and people, you know, in the city lost their minds over it. Like it was, we were appointing a dictator for the rest of their life to a lifetime appointment to rule the city. I mean, that was probably what one person said.
Well, and I completely agree with you, Paul. And I sit here and I listen to, I listen to Doherty and everybody else talk about financial. Responsibilities and everything else. And they don't even know where their own money's being spent. So.
I actually particularly blame one former department head for where a million dollar lawsuit came from.
Well, well, you, it doesn't sound like from this conversation, you know where a lot of your money's going. So that, that becomes your problem as a council. And, you know, you, financial responsibility is financial responsibility. And you can't sit up here and say you have it and then five minutes later say, well, we, we didn't know that this money was spent here. This money was spent here. But we're financially conservative. That, that's, doesn't sound, even sound close to be accurate. So, I mean, it, 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 I, I can say that this conversation right here is, is real eye opener. That the city itself doesn't even know where they're spending their own money.
Hey, thank you very much, Dan. Appreciate your time. Anybody else, Bill?
No, nobody else here.
Okay, anyone from the council have any, any other comments or whatever?
I'd like to make a motion to table it.
We, that there's no P L being considered here. This is a a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry. When we get to that point, I will.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll put a pin in that. So, okay. That being said, I will call the public hearing closed and we'll move on. And let's see, it is seven o'clock, so we can start our meeting. Okay, I will call to order. Regular meeting of the common council for Tuesday, December twenty second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt. Alderman Panis.
Here.
Alderman Doherty.
Present.
Alderman Crawford.
Here.
Alderman Robinson.
Here.
Alderman Estesha.
Here.
And Alderman Gonzalez.
Here. Okay, please proceed with the invocation.
Dear God, we seek your help with our affairs today. Bless this meeting with your divine intelligence and help us make the best use of our own. We all have diverse opinions. Yet we wish to make our differences and reach agreement satisfactorily to all. Please share a little wisdom with us to help us do the right by all concerned. Thank you for your heavenly blessing. In your name we pray. Amen.
Okay, in effort to try to streamline and and this, the pledge, I, as council president, I will lead the pledge of allegiance. I don't have a flag or the ability to stand, but my words will have to be good enough right now. So. Pardon?
There's a flag right behind me.
Okay. So I pledge allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we're getting better at that.
Anyway. Reading, correcting and approval of the minutes of the previous regular meeting.
The regular meeting of the Oleen Common Council was held on. The regular meeting of the Olean Common Council was held on Tuesday, December eighth, twenty twenty, at six thirty PM. Present, Alderman Gonzalez, Alderman Witt, Alderman Panis, Alderman Dory, Alderman Crawford, Alderman Robinson, and Alderman Anastasia.
Okay, I will make a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Okay.
Seconded by Alderman Anastasia, in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Hi.
Okay, uh, committee reports and unfinished council business.
We have none.
Communications from the mayor?
Thank you. I have uh I have three retirements. I have received a letter from Edward Pliegus, who was on the Olean Fire Department. He will be retiring on January twenty fourth, twenty twenty one, after thirty-two years of service. And we wanna wish Ed well in his retirement. I have a.
Fred Saridan.
I have a resignation from Nicholas De Cerbo. He is uh, his resignation will be effective uh December thirty first at eleven fifty-nine PM. He is leaving to be the city court judge. And I have been informed that Chief Raleigh will be retiring as of January fifteenth, twenty twenty one. And uh he has had he has had over thirty years uh service to the Olean Police Department. So uh I'd like to wish Nick well in his new venture as city court judge. Thank you for your the time you have been the city attorney. I'm sure there will be no other city attorney like you.
I like to think that there would be at some point.
Or we're in trouble.
They said the same thing about Danda Rose.
And I wanna wish uh Chief Raleigh well in his retirement. And he'll he'll uh he'll be around till January fifteenth or so. So that's all I have.
Okay, Bill, uh miscellaneous communications.
We have none.
City official reports.
Monthly report of the city auditor, month ended November twenty twentieth. Um quarterly report of the city auditor, six months ended November thirtieth, twenty twenty.
Okay, uh proposed legislations and referrals.
PL eighty-two dash twenty, I'm here, Elliot, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, December twenty second, twenty twenty, for resolution by council president. PL eighty-three dash twenty, by Mayor Elliot, referred to regular meeting Tuesday, December twenty second, twenty twenty, for resolution by council president.
Okay, uh, before we begin the public comment section, uh, I'd like to first offer an opportunity. If anyone on the council would like to make a comment, uh, please do so at this time.
I would like to just um, you know, wish my congratulations to uh the city attorney, soon to be judge, and uh to Chief Raleigh in the retirement.
Me too. I'd like to wish Nick all the best and Chief Raleigh all the best in his retirement and hope he enjoys it.
Yep, and I will uh I would also like to extend my uh gratitude to Nick De Cerbo. You know, for the past six years, he has been a uh an excellent city attorney, a very good friend. And uh the city will uh absolutely miss you. So.
Thank you.
Our city government at least.
I'd like to wish you too the best of luck, Nick, and hopefully I don't have to see you in your new position ever. But uh best of luck to you.
Uh, can I say something?
Yep.
Uh, I just like to to thank all the previous councils that I've had the opportunity to work with. I've I've been blessed to have uh some great council presidents, starting with uh Anne McLaughlin, Jim Finch, Adam Jester, uh John Crawford, Paul. You guys were a pleasure to work with. Um, I also wanna thank all of the city employees from the department heads, uh, the cops, the firefighters, the DPW workers, the uh sewer maintainers. Um, I never appreciated what you guys did and continue to do until I was in this job, seeing it on a daily basis. And and I I can honestly say a a majority of ninety-nine percent of you have the city's best interest i- in what you do on a daily basis. Finally, I I wanna thank Bill for giving me the opportunity. Uh, it was a lot of fun. I I enjoyed what I did. I enjoyed showing up every day. Uh, I enjoyed uh seeing how you really put every decision, what you thought was in the best interest of the city. And that's something that I'm uh glad to have learned from you going forward.
Thank you.
Oh, I one more thing. I have to thank my partner, uh Mike Morgan, for putting up with me for the past uh almost seven years because I don't think either one of us really thought what was involved in doing this job correctly. Uh, and I don't even think at times I did it correctly. I would be honest with you. It is, you know, it it is a full-time job for an attorney, maybe two attorneys. Uh, and we pigeonholed it into a a part-time position. So I I understand when we say we need a human resources director. We do, or we need an attorney that's got a human resources background and make it a full-time job. There there is there's a lot to be said about what needs to be in this job to do it correctly. Um, and I wanna thank Mike for being flexible with me to give me the time that was necessary to do it. Um, and again, thank you all. You've all been great. And and I think the city's in good hands going forward from our our young department heads that we have uh a- and our council that that really seems to be engaged in in doing what's best for the city. So I wish you all the best of luck as well.
Thanks.
Thanks. I also wanna thank you for putting up with Mike Morgan for the last seven years.
All right, uh, anyone else? Okay, uh, Lance, do you wanna read the uh public comment statement?
The public comment portion of the common council regular meeting is established to provide members of the community with the opportunity to publicly state their views, buzz their concerns, or to provide input pertaining to any issue affecting city government. Additionally, the mayor, common council members, and city department heads encourage any person with questions to contact them at their offices.
Okay, uh, that being said, I will open the public comment section. Uh, if you have a public co- if you'd like to make a comment, uh, raise your hand on the uh on the little uh screen here and uh we will give you your five minutes. Basically, Dan Gaten.
No, nobody, Paul.
Okay. Okay, um, going once, going twice. We will call the public comment section closed and move on to finance and bills.
The auditor has processed bills and claims against the city of Olean as per list submitted to each alderman and recommend experiment thereof. Whereas, the auditor has presented to the common council bills and claims against the city of Olean totaling two point five million dollars for the budget and welcome experiment thereof. Now, therefore be resolved that the same being all hereby audited and allowed and the auditor is hereby authorized and directed to draw warrants for the permits thereof at the amount set opposite its respective plan. We're gonna need sponsor for that, Paul.
Okay, uh, I will sponsor finance and bills. Do I have a second?
Oh, seconded.
Seconded by Alderman Dory. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Casey, no. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt.
Yes.
Alderman Panis.
Yes.
Alderman Dory.
Yes.
Alderman Crawford.
Yes.
Alderman Robinson.
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia.
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, so uh Tiffany, this is where I need to suspend the rules, correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so I will make a motion to suspend the rules. Do I have a second? Seconded, seconded by Alderman Crawford. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. Um, I will then make a motion to amend the agenda uh to include resolution one hundred dash twenty which has no PL and no sponsors as of yet, but it is to authorize and direct the city assessor to grant exemptions on the twenty twenty-one assessment roll to property owners who received the exemption on the twenty twenty assessment roll. We'll put this in at the end and we'll discuss it briefly if there's any questions or comments. But uh that being said, wanted to go through the proper Roberts rules to get this on the agenda uh formally. So um Lance, if you wanna proceed with resolutions, we'll squeeze that one in at the end and we'll talk about it real quick.
Before I go ahead, Paul, are we still gonna go the the other one that you guys want to table for the future date?
So yeah, we're gonna go on to that and then uh we'll handle that through the regular procedures. If somebody wants to make a motion to table, they.
Sounds good.
Paul, we need a second for your amend the agenda motion.
Very astute. Tiffany, thank you very much. Does someone on a second my amendment?
I'll second.
Alderman Witt, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, okay, so we've uh made the um, what do we do now? We amended the agenda.
Yes.
Got it.
Ready.
Please proceed.
Resolution eighty-five dash twenty, PL sixty-one dash twenty, by Alderman Crawford, seconded by Alderman Gonzalez, to amend the city of Olean Court of Audiences, chapter twelve housing code to include article four, short-term rental registration and licensing.
Okay, uh, so we've discussed this numerous times. Um, and uh, you know, many, any comments, questions, or concerns at this point? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt.
Yes.
Alderman Panis.
Yes.
Alderman Dory.
Yes.
Alderman Crawford.
Yes.
Alderman Robinson.
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia.
Yes.
Alderman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Resolution eighty-nine dash twenty, PL seventy-one dash twenty, by Alderman Crawford, seconded by Alderman Robinson, to amend the city of Olean charter, um charter article three, division four, to include section three point zero nine zero continuing qualifications for the city auditor.
Okay, uh, so obviously, uh, discussed at length um in the uh public hearing we just held and um also discussed uh in committee. Any additional comments, questions, or concerns?
I'd like to make a motion to table.
I have one comment. I have one comment, Paul. I I I tabling it is a chicken way out of it. I think we need to just, you know, we owe it to our taxpayers to vote on it. So that's that's my two cents.
I'll take back my motion then.
Um, before you vote, there is a clerical error here. So an amendment should be made. So this reads local law zero one dash twenty twenty rather than resolution eighty-nine twenty.
Uh, say that.
There is a clerical error here. So an amendment will need to be made. So this reads local law zero one dash twenty twenty.
Oh, post the resolution eighty-nine twenty.
You see what I'm saying?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Okay, so um I will make a motion to amend uh resolution or uh to amend this resolution as a local law zero one dash twenty. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Alderman Crawford. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, uh, seeing none, the uh local law is thusly amended. Um, any other comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt.
I think we need more discussion now.
Alderman Panis.
No.
Alderman Dory.
No.
Alderman Crawford.
Yes.
Alderman Robinson.
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia.
No.
And Alderman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Um, it's a wood, three to four. So we move on.
Keep doing the same thing over and over again.
Should I keep going?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Please do. Yeah.
Resolution ninety-four dash twenty, PL seventy-seven dash twenty, by Alderman Robinson, seconded by Alderman Crawford, to authorize the installation of a handicap parking space and related signage on West Stitch Street in the first parking spot of the northeast corner of its intersection with North Twelve Street.
Okay, uh, we did discuss this in uh committee. Uh, Alderman Robinson, anything you wanna add to it?
Not at this time.
Okay, any questions, comments, or concerns from the council? Okay, seeing none, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt.
Yes.
Alderman Panis.
Yes.
Alderman Dory.
Yes.
Alderman Crawford.
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia.
Yes.
Alderman Robinson.
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Resolution ninety-five dash twenty revised, PL seventy-eight dash twenty by Alderman Robinson, seconded by Alderman Dory, to authorize the installation of four-depth child area signs near the intersection of Henley Street and South Fourteenth Street.
Okay, uh, so also discussed in committee, uh, any comments, questions, or concerns?
I I drove by today. The sign looks good, Bill. Uh, Bob, tell the guys they did a good job.
Very, very level and parallel. Very good. Okay, uh, any uh any anything else? Okay, oh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt.
Yes.
Alderman Panis.
Yes.
Alderman Dory.
Certainly.
Alderman Crawford.
Yes.
Alderman Robinson.
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia.
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Resolution ninety-eight dash twenty, PL eighty-two dash twenty, resolution is establishing a permanent full-time electric- electrician assistant position. We're gonna need sponsor for that.
Uh, okay, um, Bill, did you have anything you wanted to add to this?
Uh, just like we said, we talked about it in committee that uh this is a is a a uh but basically bookkeeping. Uh, we only had one position of uh of assistant uh on the books at civil service in Little Valley, and we need to uh we need to establish a second one. This position has been budgeted and and it's a position has been filled for over a year. So it's catching up with the uh the uh bookkeeping process.
Okay, uh, thank you. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, uh, seeing none, would someone like to sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
Sponsored by Alderman Witt, seconded, seconded by Alderman Dory. Uh, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt.
Yes.
Alderman Panis.
Yes.
Alderman Dory.
Yes.
Alderman Crawford.
Yes.
Alderman Robinson.
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia.
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero. Resolution ninety-nine dash twenty, PL eighty-three dash twenty, to adopt the twenty twenty-one Kediraqis County Hazard Mitigation Plan. We also go into an sponsor for that.
Okay, so we uh we discussed this um in committee as well. Any comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, uh, seeing none, would someone like to sponsor? I will sponsor. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Crawford. Uh, will clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt.
Yes.
Alderman Panis.
Yes.
Alderman Dory.
Yes.
Alderman Crawford.
Yes.
Alderman Robinson.
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia.
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, um, so um next on the.
The last one, Paul, just so.
Yep. You want me to read it? Oh, you don't have it.
I don't have it.
Sorry, I missed that. So uh we have resolution uh one hundred dash twenty, uh PL none, to authorize and direct the city assessor to grant exemptions on the twenty twenty-one assessment roll uh to property owners who received the exemption in twenty twenty on the twenty twenty assessment roll. Uh, I'm guessing that's why we have um Dr. Greg Piota in the house with us. I'm guessing that's why we have Dr. Greg Piotta in the house with us. And and Mayor, do you want to kind of kick us off?
Yeah, Greg's, Greg's here to explain this. So Greg, you want to unmute yourself and?
Yeah, this is part of the government's emergency declaration, declaration that he did last, I think, on Friday. Senior citizens have to come to my office every year, bring their information to reapply for their exemptions. This is so they don't have to come in this year. They're just going to have the same exemption they had this year placed on the roll for next year. I'm still going to reach out to them in case anything has changed. But this is just so they don't have to come into the office this year.
Okay, the, sounds good. Any, any comments or questions for Greg? Okay, seeing none, would someone like to sponsor?
I'll sponsor.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Alderman Anastasia. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Witt.
Yes.
And Pannis.
Yes.
Alderman Dory.
Yes.
Alderman Crawford.
Yes.
Alderman Robinson.
Yes.
Alderman Anastasia.
Yes.
And Alderman Gonzalez.
Yes.
Motion care is seven to zero.
Okay, before we adjourn, any, any last thoughts, comments, or questions?
I'd like to wish everybody a happy holiday.
Okay, and I will wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Years.
Paul, just real quick, I wanted to thank Chief Richardson, the mayor, and and code enforcement for their help on the, the short-term rental. You know, Ed Jennings and Captain Jennings and code enforcement really, they carried the brunt of that. There was, there was a lot of work to be done. So I want to thank you to to the mayor and and code enforcement.
Well, before we adjourn, Paul, is, is a decision been made about the reorganizational meeting? Or is there going to be Zoom for everybody and the date and time and so forth to so we all know in the public mail?
The date will be, the date will be January fourth. That's the first business day after the first. And the meeting will start at six thirty, and after much thought and consideration, I think we'll go with a Zoom meeting.
Good choice.
So who's putting the hand on what Bible?
I can have my husband hold mine.
We need, let's see.
I'll put it on my iPad.
Linda, Paul, and John have to be sworn in, so. Nick will be on Zoom, I believe, to administer the oath.
Okay.
Who administers your oath?
My oath?
No, Nick's. I'm sorry. I'm looking, I'm like, you can't tell I'm looking at Nick.
So technically with, with, was with my oath, I've already signed the oath of office card, so technically I'm already in the position. The ceremonial swearing in, I'm having Selma County City Court Judge Matt Swenson, who I came up with at the same time, twenty-one years ago, is going to do that, that administration on January first.
Gotcha.
Oh.
Cool.
At which point Nick has to christen each one of these bibles, so you better bring your iPads and bibles over to Nick prior to the Zoom meeting. Otherwise, the authenticity of your holiness of your Bible will not count.
That's so unlikely, haven't.
Okay, well, that being said, I will make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Crawford, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi, and we will adjourn twenty twenty.
Bye, guys.
Have a good one, everybody.
Have a good Christmas and New Year's.